Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 3rd at 2020, uh, March 3rd at 6:00 PM. And I will call to order the Free Town Board of Selectment meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. Uh, we will be going into executive session and coming back into open session. We'll be going into executive session for the following two reasons. Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirement specifically General Law Section 30A Section 22 for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes for approval and determining whether such minutes shall be released. In the matter of approving, not releasing the executive session minutes from 1/21/25 and 2/14/25. And to approve and release the executive session minutes from 2/3/25. And second, Mass General Law Section 30A Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respects to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Association and Educators Association of Free Town in Lakeville. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining question of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do. So with that, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sluckman Lopes?
Yes.
Sluckman Zager?
Yes. Alright, we're now in executive session. We're gonna move on to our regular agenda. So, uh, discussion three, discussion vote on who will, uh, access to newly installed cameras at the transfer station, highway, and libraries.
So we have these cameras that have been installed. I think they're all up in running. I'm not sure if the annex also has cameras.
So we have the cameras that have been installed, uh, pretty much at all of the town buildings at this point. And in the past, the department heads have had access to the cameras. We haven't given anybody access to the cameras as of this, uh, date. But there are reasons that the department heads at times need access to the cameras to view whatever they need to view. I know sometimes with the highway, they'll just, they'll just check in to make sure the staff is okay there. Um, so we are just looking for, uh, a discussion on who should have access to this and cameras. And, you know, I think, did I ask someone to draw up a policy on like what the information can be used for? Cause it should only be used for like the health and safety of the employees and the, and the residents. Um, no other, no other use for it. So that's really all this is about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, you know how we sometimes you gotta document it, it's only read only?
And this is read only?
And that's what I would want, read only for the department heads. This is not a, did you go to work, let's check their work. This is for something occurred, we need evidence for safety or whatever it is, right? Um, that we go back in time and look at it, right? So can't delete anything because it's all public, open to a FOIA and everything else. So whoever does have access, it, it's just read only. Uh, you know, this is for everybody's safety and awareness more than anything else, right? A camera is a deterrent, right? It's a passive security system. We wanna keep it that way. We don't want people going in there going, "Oh, I didn't punch in in time." That's not what it's for, right? Um, so if there's a policy, we should definitely...
Yeah, and then I guess my other part of it is, is to your point, how you started this off with department heads only, right? Because of what I don't want this to turn into is that everyone has access to the cameras. Um, cause that's not, that's not the point of them. So, uh, I do think that we might have to have a policy in place for that and that everyone signs off so that everyone isn't, you know, can say that they're aware of what it is. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's great that we have them all up there. I'm, I'm happy to see all the new cameras up. Um, kudos to everyone that got involved installing them, putting them up in strategic locations. I, I know the employees feel safer. I know residents look, see them and they, and they know they can always use them as needed if something happens or occurs, like, you know, accident or God forbid, something serious happens, we have to fall back on that for evidence down the road. But, um, yeah, the new cameras, you can see them clearly, which is nice. The old ones were just like, they were old and grainy and you really couldn't see them. They were kind of just a waste of money having them there. So I'm glad that they're updated, so.
And the old ones, we used to pay a monthly fee. Now we don't, we don't pay a monthly fee. We just, we've paid for them and that's it.
Alright, um, so do I, do I wanna do a vote on it yet? Or do we wanna wait until, or do we wanna draw the policy at first before? I mean, we can, we can vote on that they can have it, but then we'll have to have them sign off on the policy once it's in place?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I've put that out. I just can't remember who's working on the policy.
Sluckman Zager?
Ms. Dean?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Susan Sargent, 32 North Main Street. I would advocate for the safety of the people in the town and at the dump transfer station, that they have access to those videos. So that if something happens, somebody can respond promptly. I myself fell at the dump two weeks ago. The dumpster was this far from the wall because there supposedly ice on the track. So they couldn't back the dumpster against the wall. And when I went to fling something into the dumpster, I fell against the dumpster. And it took me a while to extricate myself. So you, if you look at the video, you will see I'm laying there on the wall. Nobody saw what happened. Nobody did anything about it because they didn't see what happened. So I would advocate that at least at the transfer station, for safety of anybody at the transfer station, that they have access. They have a TV screen in their office. And they're sitting there and they could have seen it, but they didn't see what happened.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm sorry to hear that that happened to you. I hope you're doing okay. At least you're here. So that's, that's a, you know, good sign. But, um, my, my only concern is, is that a camera is only as good as the user. So we can, we can put something up on the TV, but if, if they're not paying attention to it, the same thing would have happened.
Yes, that's true.
So, um, although I, I understand what you're saying, I'm just not sure that it would have changed the outcome of, of what happened. You know what I mean? As far as the delay in what happened with you versus, um...
Well, if somebody needed attention sooner rather than later, they would, if they were seeing what's on the screen. Now granted, if they aren't in the shed, they're not gonna see it. But I would imagine usually when I'm out there, there's one or two people in the shed. So that, anyway, I would just advocate on behalf of having them have access to that screen to see what's going on.
Absolutely. I, I think they do now, right? Do they have access right now?
No one knows. They don't.
No.
So no, well, first and foremost, are you okay? Um, that's my main concern right now is, are you alright? Are you, you fell? You're recovering?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry that it happened to you. But no, that's, that's a great point. Um, so I think the vote stands.
You know, if somebody were bleeding?
Yeah.
You know, that would, you know, they could see it perhaps sooner because they didn't see what happened. I walked back in to tell them to report it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's how I know about the fact that videos.
Yeah, they're there. They're definitely pointing in that direction now, so. Huh, yeah, that's, I think the vote stands, given the department has the access. And then with the subsequent adding a policy to it, make sure that's reviewable and everything else.
You know, you may wanna give different people access, you know, to those cameras.
Yeah, and I mean, maybe would there, there's something to be said if we have a, a screen up that has a couple of the cameras and... Yeah, I mean, we, that, that's a further discussion, I suppose. But, um, you know, at least this gives us this guidance on this. And I'm, I'm glad, you know, thank you for, for standing up and, you know, telling us, so.
Yeah.
So, alright, so you're, you're good. I'm, okay, thank you. Alright, so with that, I will entertain, um, a motion to, um, give access to the newly installed cameras at the transfer station, highway, and library um, to all department heads.
I concur. Uh, motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item four, discussion vote whether to approve the proposal from Vertical Communications for the police station's phone system upgrades. So this is, um, through vertical, uh, which is what we're currently on with everyone else, right?
This was the funding that just got approved and I get the rest on town meetings.
Yeah, so it looks like it was about, uh, $12,301.36 and then some reoccurring charges. Everyone good with it, right?
Yeah, no, this is, this is great. This is, there's definitely a cost reduction over the years. As we're now reducing the amount of bills we have and the communication lines. It costs some money upfront, yes, like most things do, but long term, this will begin saving us money. Um, so not to mention it's, it's a better system.
Absolutely.
So, um, all four.
Alright, so with that, uh, I entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Vertical Communications for police station, uh, phone system upgrades.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item five, discussion and vote whether to approve, uh, fitness in the park classes at Hathaway Park every Wednesday. Uh, for, so April 23rd, 25 through June 4th, 2025 from 5:00 to 6:30 PM with a rain date of the following Thursday. Kylie, welcome?
Thank you.
Any, anything that you have that you wanna add to it or no?
Uh, these would be like Zumba type style classes. Um, I found an instructor, her name's Maria. She's actually, um, subbing at the Council on Aging and she's been working really well. She's a fantastic woman. And, um, the older adults over there, they welcome the challenge. So I'm excited to, to get this rolling. I figured something new other than yoga, try to switch it off.
Yeah.
Is this the, uh, the Cheer Yoga? The first, is that the Cheer Yoga?
No, this is a totally new instructor. Um, they started with Zumba, I think this month, but, um, the original instructor got hurt. Um, so they had to find someone and it just happened that it was, I was looking for someone immediately. I'm like, "Oh my God, I know someone that's free on Wednesdays." So it worked out perfect.
Oh, good. Glad to hear it. No, I, it's, it's been great. And we love, you know, what the energy you're bringing to the town with, with all these things, so.
And this is the same, and remind me, right, last year, we did this as well, right?
Yes, yoga.
Between this and Hathaway and the beach, correct? I think there was no beach?
Originally, I wanted the beach, but I found the geese to be an issue. I went over there with my niece to just scout out the area and they were looking at me kinda menacing.
Geese go where they wanna go.
Yeah.
What were the numbers last year? Did you get some, a good amount of people?
It was around like 20 to 30 people per class.
Oh, that's good numbers, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's increase those this year. Now that you have more people knowing about it, I think that should hopefully double.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool. I appreciate it. Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the fitness in the park classes at Hathaway Park every Wednesday, April 23rd, 25 through June 4th, 2025 from 5:30 to 6:30 PM with a rain date of the following Thursday.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, agenda item six, discussion and vote for the approval of the Community Program Director to create a parking map for the summer concert series in collaboration with the police department. So obviously, we had, uh, you know, some success last year. And obviously with success is, it's a great thing, but you know, there's definitely parking and stuff. So I, I like the fact that, you know, this is being thought of, being proactive, so.
Yeah, I was looking at something similar to what Praydon Fireworks does, just to streamline things. I like to keep like the front of the bandstand kind of for handicap parking. Um, just because that area's not totally accessible. Um, just so something that people are aware ahead of time, so there's not as much confusion day of.
Yeah, absolutely. And it gives awareness to the, to the public ahead of time, right? So, yeah.
Now, are you, is the plan, I'm making sure that's not the next one up. Is the plan to have the concert series once again at the bandstand? Um, I was gonna say, are you changing locations? Cause I know the Hathaway Park has electricity as well, but not the stage, so.
Same location for now. Unless if it gets like totally packed, then I'll be back here.
Perfect. Okay.
Let's hope we have to have you come back. Alright, so with that, um, I entertain a motion to approve the Community Program Director to create the parking map for the summer concert series in collaboration with the police department.
Motion made.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, discussion and vote whether to approve the mixtape cycling event to utilize town roads on 4/6/25. So, um, this is something that they've done in the past. Looks like they have all, everything's in and signed off. And furthermore, it's very little impact to the town roads. This is pretty much an off-road event. Um, so it's quite straightforward, really.
I'm not gonna lie, when I first saw this on the agenda, I thought we were making like a mixtape, right? Like the old school, you know? So I'm glad this is something that we do every year.
Yeah, yeah, no, and like I said, if you look at the map, it's 90% of it is, and he even calls it out as that. It's really just the crossroads and stuff, so, um, very little impact to the town, so. Uh, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the mixtape cycling event to utilize town roads on 4/6/25.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item, uh, agenda item number eight, discussion vote whether to approve the request from the Tuesday Club to host their annual strawberry festival at the bandstand on June 15, 2025. So obviously a longstanding event in town and, uh, very well known. Uh, they do a great job of publicizing this everywhere, you know, you see that. How far you see the outreach of their signs is, is quite incredible, so, um, they do a good job, so.
It's crossed, no rain this year.
Yeah.
You know? No, no, you're right. I never get the chance to go because it's on Father's Day, usually. Uh, but I always drive by on the way to Father's Day events and it's, I always want some strawberry shortcake. So this year, I think I have to make a conservative effort to get there, get some shortcake, then go to Father's Day activities. That's my plan.
But yeah, you know, beyond that, obviously, everything else is, uh, yeah.
It's all in place.
That is cool and in place, so they, they've been doing this for a long time, so they know what they're doing by now. So, uh, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the request from the Tuesday Club to host their annual strawberry festival at the bandstand on June 15, 2025.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number nine, discussion and vote, um, on assigning officers at Town Hall. Maybe you wanna?
Yep, so you know that we have the annex up the street? And that we moved the building and the Board of Health Departments up there. Um, with the anticipation of renovating the second floor offices, which have now been renovated uh, completely, um, ready to occupy. So I would like to move two of the departments from downstairs that don't have a lot of, um, customer uh, front-facing access to the second floor to make room. Um, eventually to make room for a clerk who's, um, really run out of space. So I would like to move the Planning Department upstairs to the old, um, Board of Health Office and the Water Department to the, um, old building department, which is the front, you know, the front of the building. I have spoken with boards and employees alike and they're all, um, I, you know, Chandler was, wishes he doesn't have to move, but if he has to, he's on board with it. Um, other than that, everybody else was 100% in favor of the move. So I'm just asking for the selectmen to, for permission to move those offices around. And then, um, we will do some renovations downstairs, not a whole lot, but I will be, there's a door between the Tax Collector's Office and the Water Department that's been sheet-wrapped over, but I wanna open it back up because they need access to each other throughout the day. And then, um, the Planning Office, Patty, the Treasurer, will go into that. So the Treasurer and Collectors will be all the first three offices on the left. And Deena's Office will then become part of the Clerk's Office. And Patty's current office, which is, is quite small, will just be left, uh, empty with a table in it for those times when you need to have a private meeting or if you're having a conference or you need a place to meet, you know? Um, I know Cheryl has election workers sometimes come in, that she needs a full spot for them. It's not that big, but hopefully it will accommodate what she needs because we're just out of space there.
Well, yeah, to your point, I don't know how many times I've seen them out there testing their equipment and they have all this different stuff that they have to do and they're having to do it in the hallway. So it would be nice to be able to give them a place to do it and that they can sit down and do it and whatever, so. Um, so, you know, as long as we're moving them upstairs and then we'll obviously renovate those offices that are downstairs, right? So we, we can just take it from, we can do it from, uh, building improvements and we...
Yeah, there's not big renovations, so yeah.
But kinda the same thing as what happened upstairs.
Cause we've already been working on offices, so it's just moving, opening a doorway, which is, the door is there on one side. They just sheet-wrapped the other side of it, so I just have to take the sheet-wrapped down and clean that up. And then, um, there's a little wall that needs to be built to block Cheryl off from where Patty is. But that's miniscule, it's really, if I have to say I have spent $2,000 on all of that, that's about it. And it will come out of facilities maintenance, yeah.
And this, this is long overdue as well, right? So for those at home or sitting here as well, this is a unique opportunity. By moving the offices upstairs down the street, we're able to renovate things that haven't been touched in years, sometimes decades. So this allows us to update the building, so we don't have another red building in our hands 30 years from now because the building hasn't been touched. So rearranging upstairs and downstairs just makes complete sense and it buys us more time with, especially with the new windows, the HVAC going in. Now, is it perfect? No, we, we've, let's face it, we've outgrown the Town Hall as far as bodies and, and people coming in. However, this is essentially lipstick on a pig. It really is. It buys us time to, for public-facing offices to get, to expand and allow more people to come in. So this is nothing but good news for that building and for Town Hall employees.
And I think that, you know, it, it was kinda started with the, um, to your point before was starting with the least amount of public facing. Um, obviously, we are not handicap accessible upstairs, so this, uh, helps limit that on, you know, based on what departments we move upstairs. So, yeah, I'm, I'm completely for this, so, um, we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, alright, so I entertain a motion to, uh, move the Water Department and Planning Department upstairs at the Town Hall.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, agenda item number 10, discussion and vote whether to approve the annual town meeting and special town meeting to be held on June 2nd, 2025 at Aponequid Regional High School Auditorium. So, um, assuming we already got the okay from the schools that they're open, um... Should I read through the timeline of all this?
That's the next one.
Oh, yeah, that's where, that's where, sorry, alright, then I apologize, so.
Now, June 9th is Lakeville's town meeting. Does it make sense for us to have hours after Lakeville's town meeting? Cause it's gonna be...
Yeah, it's by law. It's by law that we have it the first Monday in June. We can have a choice.
Oh, by law, it's by law. You gotta follow it.
So, yeah, I mean, based on that, I don't, as long as the school's open and obviously she said we already checked and it is and, you know, so.
Okay.
Cool. Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the annual town meeting and special town meeting to be on June 2nd, 2025 at the Aponequid Regional High School Auditorium.
Alright, I make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number 10, discussion and vote whether to approve the proposed timeline for the annual town meeting and special town meeting on June 2nd, 2025. Um... Alright, uh, so... So, uh, tonight will be the timeline for the Board of Selectment Agenda to approve the timeline. March 4th, tomorrow, physical posting at Town Hall, Police, Fire, Junior's Convenience Store, and Libraries announcing the meeting. Also tomorrow, Facebook and website posting. Uh, posting will state articles submitted by citizens requiring 100, uh, signatures for the special town meeting and 10 for the annual town meeting uh, from Free Town voters to be added to the warrant, uh, posting closed. Uh, also today, uh, on Board of Selectment Agenda to open for submissions for the warrant for tomorrow uh, from 8:00 AM till April 2nd, 2025 at 11:00 AM. April 14th, 2025, warrants on Board of Selectment Agenda to approve and close warrants for submission and be sent to Town Council and the Finance Committee on April 28th, 2025. The warrants on Board of Selectment Agenda for discussion and vote to approve, finalize, and close the warrant on April 29th, 2025. Send the final versions of the warrants to the Finance Committee. April 14th and April 28th, 2025, combined meetings with the, uh, Finance Committee and budget for review budgets and warrants. May 5th, 2025, Board of Selectment approve, make resume recommendations, finalize and close the warrants. Uh, warrants given to Town Constable for posting on May 14th, 2025. Warrants get posted publicly no later than May 16th, 2025. So, um...
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Make that motion.
So, yeah, so that's, you know, that's really the, the timeline. I don't, it's kinda standard, right? What we've always had to do and I don't see it, so, um... Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion, um, to approve the proposed timeline for the annual and special town meeting on 6/2, 2025, as just read.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item 12, discussion and vote whether to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants on 6/2, 25, uh, for submissions between 3/4, 2025, 8:00 AM and 4/2, 2025 at 11:00 AM, as just read in, um, you know, the timeline. We're now basic, we're now opening up, um, four submissions as of tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, so, um, I, we obviously both just said we don't have a problem with the timeline, so I'm assuming that this isn't really an issue? You're, you're good?
I'm good.
Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion, um, to approve, to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants on 6/2, 2025 for submission between 3/4, 2025, 8:00 AM and 4/2, 2025 at 11:00 AM.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item 13, discussion and vote whether to approve the outdoor ramp fee waiver policy. So this was talked about at our last meeting and, um, you know, we had some discussions um, with Carl about, uh, possibly waiving the fee. So, um, we did get some stuff back from Council and, uh, what, what we, you know, decided on in that last meeting was is that this would be to approve anyone looking for a waiver for any access ramp to a residential dwelling. Um, which I thought was important, that it was only residential. Um, businesses in a different position, that if they need to put a ramp in, that, um, you know, to, to pay for the, the fee. This is not a, a big revenue source for us, uh, it shouldn't be, right? So, um, I thought this was a no-brainer. Council gave us their updates and everything's good. So, um, I don't, I don't have any issues or concerns with it.
I, I echo what you just said. This is a, a good thing for the individuals with disabilities that do need a ramp outside their homes. Um, it's $75, you know, for those out there counting how many ramps you put up there. It's, it's 30 cents a square foot or $75 maximum. This doesn't break the bank. This isn't, like you said, this isn't a revenue source. This is just good common sense for our, for our folks here in Free Town. Um, those that already need this, already in a position or in the need of additional help in some ways, right? This is, gives them, it makes it a little bit easier for them to, to get this installed, so.
Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion, uh, to approve the outdoor ramp waiver, uh, ramp fee waiver policy.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item 14, discussion and vote, uh, whether to host separate special town meeting and, uh, for zoning discussions.
I'm not sure that I'm ready for this, um, discussion. This is the MBTA and whether we have a separate meeting for that, but I, I think we have to kinda wait and, and see where we're at. And it might be, um, although we have to relatively quickly set up that next meeting if we're gonna have a separate meeting. So I don't know what the boards, um, take is, um... I think if, at first blush, I think it's a good idea and then I go, maybe not. I just am not quite there yet.
Right. Right, for those keeping track on the bingo card, this is a July 15th deadline that, that's updated that we to submit a new plan to the state. Uh, it was overwhelmingly voted down at last town meeting. Um, if they're staying compliant, like we've been doing over the years, we have to submit another plan. Uh, our plan is to essentially submit the same plan and, and take it from there.
We're gonna make some small changes to the, to the area, but it's the same plan, yes.
So, I, I, I think we all know where it's, where, how it's gonna get voted on, but it needs to be voted on so that we can set it up to the state and then take it from there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess at this point, it's, we're gonna create more work within our office, right? And it's not, this isn't on us, this is on you guys and then everyone, other people within Town Hall um, that we're gonna put more on. So does it make sense to just kinda do everything at once, right? Do you think it will make it easier and clean cut? I mean, you know it's gonna happen, what happened at the last meeting. It'll get moved to the front of the, the agenda even if it's not there, right? It'll get moved to the front of the, the agenda even if it's not there, right? So, um, it, it will cause a lot of people in there at first and then kind of dwindle them off. So, I mean, I don't know. Would, I mean, would, do you have any special thoughts on it? What?
I, I don't, like I said, I'm not really, I, I, I don't really have a preference one way or the other. It will make the general business of the town easier to address if this is not part of the meeting. But, um, it will add a, a lot of work to us to have two separate meetings and I think, I don't want anybody to think we're trying to do anything sneaky because that's not, that's not what's happening.
Right.
So that's always my concern because, you know, I think people think that we're, uh, uh, sometimes, there's a few people that will think we're trying to do things, so. If they, did they think that we're gonna do it, having a separate meeting, we're trying to do something that is, um, ill-thwarted, I don't know. So I'm, I'm up in the air on this one to be honest with you.
Mm-hmm. I just think for clarity, it does make sense to do it at the regular meeting for that reason, right? That last stated one is the last thing we want is people to think that we're trying to go around them to do something and sneak something by, cause that's, that's the last thing I think anyone wants to do, so, um.
Oh, I agree with that. And we have, you know, essentially we did the same thing with the last time. Promote, promote all the meetings, promote all the warrant articles, let the people know the facts, all of it, the good, bad and the ugly. Whether you love it or hate it, here's the information, vote for what you feel is right. Um, you know, I think I know how it's gonna get voted and it's, I, 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 it, it is what it is, you know? Uh, let the, let the folks tell us how to make this work. Um, but there, you know, nothing's really changed. A couple of things have changed, you know, we know more information now regarding some grants that have been pulled and things like that. So, but do I think it's gonna change the vote? Probably not. But I think, yeah, keeping it together that way, it's already open, we, it's one message versus two messages and.
I will tell you, one of the concerns is that I have to, the planning board has to have public hearings on the zoning and everything to get it on town meeting. I think that the proposal needs to be done relatively soon, like the next week or two. As you know, we have nobody working in that department. I've been trying to cover that. I'm on vacation. And so I'm concerned about deadlines and it, it may be that I, I do come back and say we do need to.
Yeah, I guess if you say it's, if it's unattainable, then we have to bring it back up and do that because the last thing I want you doing is, you know, trying to figure out a way to do something and, you know.
It's, it's physically impossible for me to get it done right now and the next two, it's just physically impossible. There's just not enough time in my day. So that is the one thing I wanna put out there that because of the process, I, it may be that we have to push it. And we do have that extra, we have to July fourteenth to get it approved. I, I mean, we all know that the tone, unless we can come up with, um, something that makes sense. Uh, and, and it's not, nothing's really gonna change. So the tone is there and we know what the underlying tone is. Um, so we definitely have an uphill battle. I was hoping to be able to quantify what it means if we don't get the zoning in terms of dollars and figures. But we don't have that information. The state really hasn't been forthcoming with that.
Yeah.
So it's hard for me to say, I need to be able to tell taxpayers, if we really want them to vote for this, we need to tell them what it means to them in dollars and cents and we can't do that right now.
Hmm.
So I think that will come at a later date when we're able to quantify how painful it is that they're taking away grant money. And grant money is one thing, but when they start taking away money for the schools, that's really when we're, we're gonna have to raise the red flag and say, we're not gonna be able to afford, afford our school system if they're taking away chapter seventy monies and funds to the school. So, but I need to be able to tell them exactly what that means, right? We all wanna know what's the pros and cons. I can't give you the cons. I can't, I can't give you the pros. The cons is we're gonna, we're gonna grow our, our community twenty-five percent and we're not gonna be able to afford the infrastructure to do so, police, fire, everything. So I can't give them both sides of the equation, which we all need to make a decision.
Absolutely.
And I, I don't, I don't have that information. The state hasn't been giving me that information, so.
Right. Like everybody else, I'm sure they're all keeping an eye on what other towns are doing and everything else and, and that's a good, you know, good indicator of what's to come. Uh, you know, I, I think we maintain what we've been doing, give them all the information, all of it, right? Whether they wanna hear it or not, this is the information, let them make the decision, right? If they come back and vote yes for it, then we're gonna go all gung ho and say yes. If they come back and no, let's no. It's, uh, it's very simple to me.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
So, it's just our job to provide you with information.
I don't think it's gonna change anything, but it's, we'll, we'll put it back in front of them and see what happens, so.
One thing I do wanna look at, I know there's a waiver process, right, from the unfunded mandate that came out from the estate auditor. Now, whether that has legs or wings, I don't know, uh, that's something that we can look at, but maybe in this articles, these articles as well. If we, gets, one gets voted down, do we submit to the, to the state what we have in place now, right? Of the eight per, per acre versus the sixteen that they want? Do we send that to the state and say, hey, this is what we have. We've had this since twenty twelve. Take it or leave it. Is that something we do? Something to discuss over the next couple of months. Because give them something, here's.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we're, we're gonna create a bunch of work for ourselves, so we don't need to, at this point, let's, let's see how the vote goes and then take it from there, so, I, um.
Food for thought.
I don't think we need to vote on anything like that right now.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm gonna say we hold on this and then if we decide that there's timing or, you know, we have to know more about timing wise and not stressing Debbie out and Luanne out anymore than they already are, so. So we're just gonna pass on fourteen, you know, it says to vote, we're just gonna, we're not gonna, we won't do anything on that yet.
And fifteen is a pass. That's between the, um, the attorneys are negotiating that right now and I'll bring that back before the board.
Okay. Alright, so we'll pass on fifteen. See, those two went by, well, that fifteen went by really fast. Uh, agenda item number sixteen, discussion vote, um, whether to take any action on the request from the former owners of Independence Harbor for a refund for their license renewals for twenty twenty five. Uh, so they, they submitted a letter to us basically that they, um, they reapplied and paid for their, uh, alcohol license because they were still the owners. And then a- at the beginning of the year, the ownership changed and they didn't use the license, so they're, they're basically asking us to, to, to refund their money that the new owners have, um, now paid. So.
Are they double paid? Well, not double paid, see, I know sold and everything else.
The thing is though, that, here's the problem, is that license needed to be had in order to transfer to the new owners. So they had to pay for that license because the closing and the transfer didn't take place before the end of the year. So they had to have the license in order to transfer to the new owners, in order to get the sale to go through. You, 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 they needed that for the sale. Um, if you get your driver's license on today and then lose it tomorrow, you don't get a refund for the cost of purchasing your driver's license, right? They needed that license in order to effectuate the sale. I, I, I don't have a vehicle to even repay this money. Um.
Those are my next questions, like, is there even legally ob- uh, options, legal option that we have?
What I would take it out of, what fund, like, we don't have a fund for refunds and fees.
Yeah, and then I also worry about the, the idea of, and I, I mean, I, I get it, it's an unfortunate timing part on them and I think they're, they're actually really nice people. But I, um, I worry about then the next person, right? So we kind of set a precedence with, by doing this, right? If we, if we do it this time, then what's the next time? Well, I only used it for half a year.
And we do it with everything. I mean, if you have a dog on January one, you get to pay for the dog license for the year. If your dog passes away on January two, you're still technically liable for that license. And we get this all the time. Um, it's really just, like I said, and they actually, this wasn't even a separate license and the new owners got a completely new license. They didn't. They transferred the existing license. Yes, they had to pay a separate fee because they were a different owner, but I, I don't, they, you know, they could have chose not to renew their license and have the new owners come in for a completely new license, which would have been a much longer, much, uh, different approach. So there was definitely a value to them to getting this license renewed.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I don't have a vehicle to repay this, so.
I mean, I, I feel bad saying it to them, but I just don't see how.
There's also, like, there's three licenses. You issued two of them, the entertainment and the alcohol. Um, the third license is a food establishment, so I did give a letter of this, uh, copy of this letter to the chairman of the board of health so that they could address it as well.
Thank you. Yeah.
So, before we vote on, is it behoove of us to create a policy for something like this in the future? If it could, you know, something's just happening in the, in the back pocket, if, if it needed, if need be, we can refund things in the future. In the event, something that needs to be refunded, if it was a mispayment or I don't even know, but how many times does this come up? Not very often.
It's the first time I've seen it happen.
So, yeah. Well, for today, it sounds like nothing we can do. Okay. Food for thought. Put on, on the burner, things to look into later.
Huh. So, yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, for, for the reasons stated above, I just, I, like I said, I, I feel bad because I do, I understand what they're saying that they had the license for only a few days, but to, to Debbie's point is they needed the license in order to make the greater good happen, so. Um, so with that, I entertain a motion um, to deny the request from the former owners of Independence Harbor for a refund for their license renewals for twenty twenty five.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number seventeen, discussion and vote whether to approve, approve to declare the items listed on attachment A as surplus and what to do with them. Um.
Okay.
I don't see it either. Thank you. Alright.
Those look familiar.
So we have, uh, seventeen miscellaneous radios, two handheld, uh, Patriot radios. Um, I should have mentioned the, the seventeen radios have an estimated value of around a hundred dollars each. Uh, the recommendation would be to auction off on municipal bid. The two handheld Patriot radios, a hundred dollars each, auction off on municipal bid. And then an HP color laser jet pro, um, estimating value twenty-five dollars and it says, uh, ACO may take otherwise requests to send to the transfer station. Um, yeah, I.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Debbie, these are the radios we got replaced through, our personal county ARPA, right? It was a regular ARPA, um, so. Perfect.
So, so, yeah, no, I mean, um, put them on municipal bid, put them at a, 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 a low threshold, right?
Twenty-five dollars, twenty dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna say twenty bucks a piece and then we, you know, they, they don't come back to us that they didn't hit minimum bid and we're wasting more time, so, um, you good with that? Do you want a min- minimum bid, twenty dollars? Yeah.
We got it.
Alright, so with that, uh, I entertain a motion to approve to declare the items listed on attachment A as surplus and to send all the radios to municipal bid and, uh, the printer to the ACO to otherwise request to take to the transfer station um, with a minimum set bid of twenty dollars on all the radios.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, turn it over to you for personnel.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, agenda eighteen, personnel board acknowledged the resignation of A. Ken Wilkins, Kent Wilkins for finance committee, building committee as precinct resident in the council of aging library, community building committee, effective two one, twenty twenty five. Kent, thank you so much for everything you've done for this town over the years. We, we definitely appreciate it and, and love it. Thank you. Back to you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, agenda item number nineteen, discussion vote on town beach and boat ramp staffing, litter, uh, police presence needs.
It's that time of year.
It is. Um, so we have, um, you know, we, um, we, uh, Luanne and I met with an individual and, um, you know, we, we kind of went through some different stuff. And, um, you know, had some ideas and now we're, I think, kind of back in front of the board ahead of the, the season and the ramp up, so to speak, of people and, you know, see what, um, how everyone's feeling about it. So, you know, uh, there's obviously been no shortage of concern about, um, activities happening at the beach as well as, you know, littering and other things, so, um, you know, how do, how do we curb it? And, uh, you know, and, and take it to the right direction. We don't wanna just figure out how to stop things from happening. We wanna make things better.
Yeah, more usable.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think we started on the right path, right? We added some lights to that, to that street, right? Two lights or soon to add them. So that's the start. I, I'd love to see power down there someday, right? So that we can do more, probably more sand, make more volleyball pit areas, make it more accessible for people to use. Um, yeah. I like, the pool noodle idea is a good idea, but as the notes say, potential triple hazard, trip hazard and things like that. But, li- li- well, staffing wise, I know last year we discussed it, all the, well, last couple of years we discussed it. I know we do mostly staffing for the boat ramp.
Mm-hmm.
Is the, are we thinking having them switch, you know, back and forth, more rotations?
The, the problem is, is we're always struggling with staff just at one place, so it's tough to have someone jumping back and forth when we have the need of having people there. So.
Well, I think that also you gotta remember that this is the first year we're gonna have, we have an SRO officer that that is new, that should, supposed to be helping with the beach and the boat ramp throughout the summer. So we're gonna have more police presence than we've had in the last two years. So that, I think will be helpful at least on, at least at the beach where they took it, the cars that are from out of town. Um, and just to be able to drive through the boat ramp, park a lot and check on the staff there to make sure everything's okay. Uh, we've also talked about putting a radio down there, that they'll have a radio to dispatch as well. We've gotten power down there, which we didn't have in the past, and some lights and whatnot down there, so. I think every year we've made improvements, um, but the SRO officer, which I'm sure we're gonna have more discussions about moving forward, but the plan is for them to spend some more time at those two locations in the summer.
Yeah.
And they have the ability to, to, to fluctuate between both, so, yeah.
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 Uh, Nick, Nick Filozzo, two forty-nine Middleboro Road. I heard selectmen Lopes talk about it briefly, so I'm wondering if I can just quickly discuss the town beach. One, I wanna thank you guys for what you've done at the boat ramp. Um, I live very close to that and it's been appreciated, especially since two thousand twenty. It was quite difficult over this, so I appreciate the gate, the staffing and that. However, I want the town beach, um, I think you were talking about getting electric down there. I think that's severely underutilized. Um, and I saw what has happened at Hathaway Park with a pickleball court. And I think that would be something I'd like the town to consider putting over there for more use. Um, I do also appreciate, I know you talked about enlarging the beach. Um, I think those barriers certainly have stopped people from backing their vehicles in and I don't think it's stopped everyone. People carry their jet ski still, but, um, I think by making that more of a spot for people to go, like it was back in the day. Um, I think it would be great for this side of town. I know they used to have the yoga there, which I think was heavily attended, but because of, I guess, the geese, that was an issue. Um, but it seems as though a lot of the activities happening in town happen in a sauna and sometimes it's tough for residents in East Free Town to get over to the bandstand for those kinds of nights. Um, so I just wanted to speak up, see if the selectmen would consider doing something like that for the parks.
Oh, we agree. We definitely agree. I know we've removed the, the shed, right? The shed's gone by now? I haven't been there in a while. Shed, so we've removed the shed, we've added some lights to those poles leading up to the beach. Um, there are definitely discussions regarding move, possibly moving those barriers, adding more sand, so that more volleyball pit areas, things like that. Um, working with Kylie, the community program director and Jared and everybody, everybody, we all want the same thing, but I would love to have that as used more often, right? Um, not just for football or, or walking your dog out there or swimming, let, let's get out there and, and do things, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, we've looked at the electric, um, we get a, quite, uh, because of the price came in at twenty-two thousand dollars and then procure, I have to do procurement and so we don't have the funding at that. So something that we're gonna talk about putting a warrant article together to do improvements over there. Similar, we were able to use ARPA to do Hathaway, but we don't have any ARPA left, but do similar on the East Free Town side. Get something rolling over there because it is amazing how many people are using Hathaway Park now and I, I, and it makes me so happy, yeah. To drive by, I see, and it's kids, young kids, like eight, nine, ten years old every day in there. Um, and that's what the parks are for.
Yeah, and, and once you do that, it, you know, you build it, they will come, that old saying, right? Um, but as it gets, as it gets cleaner and cleaner, more and more people start going there, right? Um, I, I would love to see that place used more often. You know, I know there was a discussion with the open space committee, open space and recreation committee that they wanted to do like a, a, a annual, uh, festival there. Or annual, almost like, uh, the lakeside festival at the boat, at the beach. I think that might, might roast some wings. I don't know. I, that, I, I would go, right? Maybe some events down there, so.
So, so basically what we need to do is we just need to get the, the, the revenue, right?
I'm gonna put an article together for town meeting, deciding a, a dollar figure. I know that the electric came in at twenty-two thousand dollars to bring it down to the beach.
What did we spend on the one at Hathaway? Was it about fifteen?
Overhead power and everything, so all we had to do was add a pole and some lights and that was like four grand.
Oh, I thought for some reason it was more than that.
I mean, overall at Hathaway, we, we, we put in a new fence, we put the pickleball court, we got a grant for a part of that, we put the light. We put a new basketball, um, thing in, so we probably spent fifteen grand.
Yeah, maybe that's where. Yeah, maybe that's what my my mind set was coming.
At the beach as well, like, it has definitely room for a basketball court, a pickleball court, um, even a place to play some kayaks, right, kayak ramp, things like that. It it's definitely, it it was, I I hear all these great stories from residents and everything else, how how they used it growing up, whether it was swimming or they went out there for fishing, um, a a little TLC will make it go a long way. I I want that, I I know people now go to the Lakeville Pond, uh, I forgot the name of the pond, but clear water.
Clear water.
Clear water. Instead of going there, why don't we keep them in town and have them go to our own pond, and just, all it needs is a little, little touch-ups here and there. Maybe even making it sound a little simpler, but it's got untapped potential, and I would love to go there uh, more often.
And but I I do think, uh, to Mr. Filozzo's point is that we do, and it's not, it's no disrespect to anyone on this side of town. There is some stuff that's heavier towards the assouant side right now, so would be nice to give something on that side of town. And that can be done, I I mean, we just have to figure out placement, right, so we don't strangle ourselves down the road where we put it in a place and then we get it in the way of other things, but I do like the idea, and it's it's something different there, right, because you have baseball and football there right now, and this is a little bit different of an activity. Um, and I think it draws in different people, and it might be something that the parents like to play while the kids are on the beach or whatever, or or vice versa, the the parents lay on the beach and the kids are playing, you know, so.
Yeah, a- and as far as geese, obviously, we can't control that, but if there's more people there, in theory, there's less geese there. They're they're gonna be moving and moving, flying along, like, oh, there's people there, I can't sit, I can't poop there. They might, but eh, but the more we use it, the it'll stay clean, right, longer periods of time. Then, of course, trash pickup and everything else is is will become an issue, but that's something we we can definitely solve. Um, having a town article, I I like that idea, I I think we could, there's, we have money we could dedicate to that, and then make it better for the residents of East Free Town. Uh, not just East Free Town, whoever, all residents, all over town, but it'll now be e- almost even on both sides.
My my only thing is, is, and I I a a hundred million percent agree with that, but I wanna have a very clear cut idea of what we want to accomplish ahead of going to the town, because I don't wanna go to the town for funding to say, oh, we need twenty-five thousand dollars to put electricity there, and then, okay, great, well, we wanna put a pickleball court in, so now we need to go back for additional funds. So I would rather say, this is the funding we need, and this is what we wanna do. And then that way, we have everything that we can do it all in one clean swoop, rather than doing it piecemeal.
I'm working on that, I, cause I think we've also talked about upgrading the basketball courts at, they'll find me too, that needs some, they need some attention as well. And and the good news is, people are u- will utilize utilize them if you if you do it, and I think that's, that's the best thing.
And we had, we just had Kylie in here, right, with her uh, events that she's doing, she's doing a great job with. If we can update that area and do things, then, you know, maybe she can start holding more events there.
Yeah, she can't do it because of the power. That's why that was been my main focus, is to get power there, so she can do concerts, she could do different things on that.
Imagine that, having a concert on the water, it'd be fantastic, people could pull up their boats right near the bay, or their jet ski, watch the concert. It's a fantastic idea, um, it's an untapped resource, we've we've, again, I keep hearing from residents that have used it in years past, right? Um, and the new generation is missing out, all they think about is goose poop, right? For la- for lack of better things, and it's not really accessible to them, well, let's make it accessible to them, let's make it usable so that they can go out and have events. Maybe you'll be, yeah, power is step one. Next, next question would be, what about bathrooms, right, we have porta-johns we can put down there, right, it's not ideal uh, for that, for those areas, but cheaper than building a bathroom, right?
Yeah, we do put the porta-johns down there in the summer.
We already put porta-johns down there, but I mean, I do want because I I really do wanna do this, I keep saying it, but I wanna do it once and do it right, you know, you know, things might change down the road. Pickleball might be big now, and then ten years down the road be non-existent, or blow up in size, and then we need more.
Well, the good thing about pickleball court, you can use that as a as a, almost like a makeshift stage.
No, absolutely, I mean, I I'm just, I'm using pickleball because that's what was just brought up, but I mean, I really want uh, for us to look at it on, what do our residents say they need? What, what's gonna be the greatest good for the most residents? Um, and, you know, we, we heard a lot about pickleball, we put it in Hathaway, and then lo and behold, it's getting used, right, so it's, there is a need for it, so maybe that means doing it over on this side of town, but what else beyond that? Well, one of the things we, to your point before, was we talked a lot about, right, right now, we have this huge parking lot in a small beach. Well, we need to possibly push that back, but then what do we do with that, okay, so we can fill it an extra fifty feet with sand, but just to fill it with sand, to fill it with sand isn't gonna do anyone any good, so, um, you know, how do we best utilize that space?
Great project for some of our committees, like uh, Ozrec or even the cu- Cultural Council, I don't know. Reach out to people and say, hey, what what ideas do you have, maybe even do another survey, I know we did one for for the community program. And, yeah, the town planner as well, so, yeah, no, food for thought, absolutely, I think that's um, there's a lot of potential there, and I'd like to see something happen there.
So, so timing wise, um, in order for us to put something, when do you think we would be able to? Please don't, I I don't want you to strangle me, um, put in some sort of funding together for the next meeting.
Something in a special town meeting, cause then the money will be ready readily available, so I already know what the electric bill looks like for that. Um.
We know roughly pickleball.
Know what that is, I mean, my thoughts, if you wanted to know my honest thoughts, is to put something like a hundred thousand dollars for park improvements. And we start with that, and we do, we pick what we, the priorities, and then if we have extra money, we do some of the other things, because like I said.
Little Fenway.
The Little Fenway, those basketball courts need some love as well, and they get utilized a lot too, and so, um I think that's, that would, that would be kind of how I would approach it, and just use the language all encompassing that, oh.
Yeah, add the discretion of the board or whatever, to to be able to do stuff, but then we do.
What we know we wanna do, and then we, if there's money left over, we can utilize it for additional things.
Right, utilizing our outdoors, that's you know, as a father, you know, as as parents, you know, we're always looking for something to do with our kids, right? Um, I know I see quite a few people walking around a sauna, and I'm always asking them, hey, what are you guys doing, like, oh, there's nothing really to do, let's go do this, go do that. I can only imagine that's happening in East Free Town as well, so, that's uh, let's get them, let's get them active.
And I, and I also think that when we started this, we talked about the, you know, people that, how how this beach is perceived. Right, if we have lighting down there, it might help with some of the issues that some people believe are happening later on at night. Um, you know, so this this security benefits to having the electric there with some overhead lighting as well, and.
I think some cameras.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
You know, I mean, that's obviously food for thought, but it's just, just something else to call out, that, you know, lighting can be a a security measure as well.
Absolutely.
Do uh, anyone else have, do you guys have any other thoughts, or no?
No, I heard a lot, I heard a lot more than I expected to hear, so that was good.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, you know, as as you know, that when we talked, right, there's, there's always this uh, timeline of stuff to go through, right, you you've heard that a lot tonight, so it's why I'm I'm thinking of things ahead and saying and it sounds like they already have, but you know, the really, the funding is always the hardest part, right, we can sit here with good ideas, but if we don't have the funding, it's just that, it's just an idea, and it's gonna go to the wayside, so. But I do think what we need to do is, and I'm not saying tonight, but we do need to figure out the best way to come up with a layout for the id- for the, because adding power down there will be adding power down there, we don't need a layout for that, right? Cause it's just getting the poles there, and then we can pull off of that, but I'm just think, from that point forward, I wanna be able to say, okay, this is we might only be doing a pickleball court first, but what's the overall piece look like?
A conceptual layout, so we don't put something that we then have to rip out later on, yeah, I think both parks are at that point. Hathaway too, I think that they need a second court there, but I don't wanna put a second court until we make sure, we're we're talking about putting stadium seating there, and maybe a stage there, but I don't wanna put any of it because you wanna make sure you can maximize the potential of the park, and you don't wanna put something that then you're ripping out to move or change around, so. I I I thought about getting votes for um, having uh, conceptual designs drawn for both, and and you would pull in the Open Space Committee and different people to weigh in on what they think should be there, and and a town planner will be really integral in doing that. I can try to get prices, so at least I know the pricing for 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 those kinds of conceptual designs moving forward.
Yeah.
As part of this, but.
Yeah, because then if we can call that into what we're doing as far as with the with the funds, right? And unfortunately, that makes it slow down just a little bit more, right?
We're doing it right, that's, you know, overall, we're doing it the right way, you know, putting the time and effort into it, making sure we're doing it correctly the first time. So we're not wasting any money down the road, right? Um, like anything else in towns, it it costs a little bit of money to do things right, right, but we'd, let's do it, that's uh, let's put our heads together and see what comes up.
So I don't know that there's really a vote that needs to be had on this, right, because there's really nothing to vote on, we, you know, we kind of talked over a lot of things, but um, short of having the warrant articles and stuff, and you know, what we're gonna do. I'm not sure, right, I don't, Debbie, you don't foresee?
I mean, I don't know, I I would just, I would gonna bring back staffing from last year and work on that. Bring back the manager, or ask if the manager wants to come back.
You had two managers.
Yeah.
Are we asking if they wanna come back, have we done that?
No idea, I've done nothing on that.
So should we, should we, should we ask the two managers to come back, and one do one shift, one do the other? And then have uh, two other staff members to work under them and cover that, because we we need to have coverage there.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, no, we need coverage, and as I was saying before, right, so we don't have, we're already struggling for staff, so yeah, I'm we we need them there, so we do, we do need to ask them to come down.
Start working on that, we'll put out, um, see if the existing managers wanna come back, if not, we need to put that ad out, and then I don't know how many of the staff members will wanna come back, but we we don't need as many staff as we had last year.
What do we have last year, four or five?
Five.
Five.
Yeah, we don't need five, we need four, four is max, and then um, see if they wanna come back, if not, put the ad out.
Yeah, no, that works, if you're saying, hey, four's the magical number, then, then that's.
On a schedule that makes sense.
Yeah, and if we need to adjust it, we'll adjust it, but.
Only staff it like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Right, yeah, yeah, whatever schedule we had last year seemed to work pretty well, right, I'm sure there's little tweaks here and there that we can make.
Yeah, I think there's some tweaks we can make.
Overall, we're, we're, like, you know, like, like the boater said, it's the transformation of the boat ramp itself, right, from when we started with the kiosk, and then it really pays for, it pays for the staff, essentially, right? Right, and and now the fencing's there, the shed's there, they're more attentive, um, the shenanigans that were happening over the years have died down, right, quite a bit. Right, but for for the most part, it's cleaner, it's 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 more rece- more receptive to people coming in and out, um. Not really many things are outside of our control last year, of course, you you get a knucklehead hair in there, that kind of skews things, but overall, it was a it it keeps getting better every year, right, and it's uh, let's continue that trend, and making sure that we have more people there. And not have our own staff there on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, that can't happen.
Alright, so I guess then I will entertain a motion um, to enter, to uh, entertain the same staffing level for the beach and boat ramp, uh, for this year twenty-five.
I make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it, um, so now we're just gonna do some signatures.
So your pickleball court, do we, we know when it's getting painted?
I don't know, I gotta work on that.
I'm sorry, I'm just moving it out of my way.
It's like way slappy, she's not putting her, her posters down there, the city. I didn't even think slacking either, I was gonna say.
Two signatures and.
And an initial.
Initial, you should be good. Yeah, we'll take that.
Usually we leave here with our wrists hurting. There you go. That's right.
Alright, so we're good there, so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Alright, make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.